So I want you guys to know that Karen apparently went at least three times the distance I did and got there in the same amount of time. So let's hear it for Karen.
All right, well, I think we are on YouTube and recording. So we can get started here. Sorry, just give me one second. Okay, so welcome everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 12th. It's 12:15 PM, sorry, 12, yes, PM. And we are gathered today as a, for this special city council meeting before a regular city council meeting tonight at seven. And our agenda item is our sanitary sewer rate study presentation and workshop. So I'm going to turn the time over to Chuck. And just for those that are watching, we have opted to do a, we, this is an electronic meeting. I am serving as the anchor, the anchor location here at City Hall, but otherwise all else are participating remotely. So thank you all for zooming in for this study, sewer rate study. Chuck, I'll let you take it from here.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And actually, Ben's going to start us out and then we've got different roles for myself and our consultant team in this presentation as well.
Okay.
I was, I was going to provide an overview before we get into the details of the presentation. I will go ahead and, that pulled up here. Can everybody, can everybody see that?
We can see that. Thanks, Ben.
Perfect. Okay. So in May of this year, we initiated this process for a sewer rate study update after the budgetary shortfall became clear. So just as a quick refresher on the financials and the reason behind this workshop and the rate study. The budget deficit for this year is $441,000, of which $221,000 is a cash shortfall. So 441,000 includes depreciation. If you exclude those non-cash items, we have a cash shortage of $221,000 in the sewer fund for fiscal year 2021. This means that we're drawing on reserves, cash reserves to operate. So once this became clear in the budget process, we engaged with Zion's Public Finance and Bowen Collins, who partnered with them to do this rate study. So we've been working with Susie Becker and Aaron Montgomery from Zion's and Keith Larson from Bowen Collins. Chuck, Obi and I have also participated throughout this whole process. So it's going to be a three-part presentation. First, we're going to have Chuck. He's going to provide an overview of the current state of the sewer system. And then Keith is going to take it from there and discuss what has changed since the sewer rate study that was done in 2017. After that, Aaron Montgomery of Zion's is going to present the financial model and present the three different scenarios that were created as options to resolve the budget shortfall. And then after that, I will wrap up the presentation by providing the next steps and open it up for discussion with the council. So with that, Chuck, I'll let you take it from there.
You'll run the PowerPoint, Ben?
Yep.
Thank you. So we've updated this slide. Some of these slides you've seen before, council, but for members of the public, I think it might be valuable for them to understand the system as it exists today. Our sanitary sewer system within the city, we've got about 30 miles of buried pipe. And about half of that is an eight-inch diameter size. The rest of it is various sizes, which I'll talk about as well. We have over 570 manholes. And the treatment plant capacity is 1.75 million gallons per day. That's upon full buildout. Currently, we're getting about 1 million gallons per day into the system. And we don't have the, in several years, you know, 10 to 15 years, we'll probably need to implement building the second batch reactor right now. And that's what the total capacity would be. Lift stations currently, there are six that we operate, three municipal and three residential. And again, a lift station is just where gravity's not working with the sewage. So we have to lift the sewage to get it to flow again, essentially. Known issues are pipe and manhole deterioration. We've documented that when the gas company came through and videotaped the system for us several years back, as well as during our master plan that was adopted in 2018. And residential lift station maintenance is a problem because we're basically called to do that when they fail. And there's no one else who can, who has our ability to fix it. Ten-year capital improvement costs out of the master plan, there are $10.9 million remaining to be built. And the budget source for the sewer system is the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Again, just a gentle reminder that just like culinary water is an enterprise fund, the sanitary sewer is also an enterprise fund, meaning those are dedicated funds. Excuse me. Take a second, talk about what the service life is of pipe. Typically, when designing sewer systems, we use 50 years as the average life expectancy. Even though, as you can see here, it varies in pipe material PVC, which, and HDPE on the top and the bottom. Those are the kind of the modern materials that are used for the most part. All have a minimum lifespan of 50 years. Clay pipe, which was used back at the turn of the 20th century, and we have some of that in our system, can last up to 100 years. Unfortunately, it can be five with improper installation because clay pipe's very fragile and the joints are difficult. It allows root damage to incur in there. Cast inductile iron pipe could be 75 to 100. Unfortunately, it's more like 50 years with corrosive soils. And as we've discussed before, Moab has corrosive soils, this entire region does. Concrete pipe, and I'll show you in a minute, is the majority of our pipe is 50 to 75 years lifespan. With only 15, if you have a high hydrogen sulfide levels in your system. Unfortunately, we have high hydrogen sulfide levels in our system. Next slide, please. And this is just a quick pie chart showing that about 35% of our system in the yellow on the left is made out of PVC, the modern material. 12% is clay, the oldest lines, transite six, which is the oldest asbestos pipe. And unfortunately, about 47% of our system is concrete, which is highly subject to the hydrogen sulfide deterioration. Next, please. Known ages of the pipe, we spent time going back through the subdivision records and everything, all of our records. And on the left is the age of the pipe, the length of the pipe, and maybe more importantly, is the percentage total on their right-hand column. So zero to 40 years, which is less than the typical 50-year lifespan, about 33% of our system. So that's good. That's part of the system that's, you know, operating the way it should be, probably. Forty to 50, we're getting near that 50-year cutoff, about another 5%. But then, as you can see, between 50 and 60, and 60 plus, and we have pipe, Obi's confident that we have pipe in town that's 95 years old. That's not in good shape. About 60% of our system is over that 50-year-old threshold. So that is an indicator of failure on the horizon, if not, some of it already occurred. And we do have breaks regularly. Next, please. Now away from the numbers for a minute, just to look at some pictures. Here's a picture of a concrete pipe. And I can't point with a pointer, but you can see that there's rebar in there that's showing up like in the middle. That's just ghosts of rebar now, if you will. And you notice that this cobbley stuff is not a smooth cement like it was when it was installed. It's been corroded away by the hydrogen sulfide gases down there. And the worst places for hydrogen sulfide gas is where there's a pipe that's shallow and the heat contributes to it. And where there's a shallow slope as well. So here's a picture, and you can see this is a concrete pipe. And it's no longer a smooth lining. It's, the cobbles are apparent and deteriorating. Next slide. And this is a root intrusion. So this is a concrete pipe up in the Tusher Street where the roots are actually invade, had broken through the wall of that pipe. Because the pipe is weakened with age because of the deterioration that naturally occurs in these pipes. Next. Back to the numbers. This one, I'm going to take a minute to try and make sure it's a, what we did is we thought it might be useful to catalog what our record has been on major sewer line projects in the last 14 years. So in 2007, we did a 3,300-foot pipe, the North Area Sewer Line. 2016, we did 400 North. 2018, the West Sewer Infrastructure. So we have done some projects. And that 14-year total is about 8,000 feet of pipe. Well, which is a yearly average, just dividing 8,000 by 14. And we've replaced about 577 feet per year. Now, if you go down, and that's about 0.3% of our total system. And if you go down below, the next part of the table, there's a 60-year annual replacement. We should be replacing on a 60-year schedule for the amount of pipe we have and manholes. About 1.7% per year, or we're at 3,000 feet of pipe every year we should be replacing. And so you can see back up to it, when we're only doing 577 feet, we're doing 20% of what we should be doing on a 60-year schedule to keep our system whole and to keep it functioning adequately. Next. As you know, our January 28th sanitary sewer master plan had estimated capital improvements of about $8,219,000 and major maintenance of $5.5 million. We've updated that. Next slide. As part of this study, we've gone in and taken out the projects that we've been able to complete since 2018, as well as projects that have risen to the surface as more critical based upon condition. And you can see here, the council, we've talked about some of these projects before, Birch Avenue, the sewer in Pat Creek behind Episcopal Church. A big one down here, about halfway down, where it says MIS-2 is the South Trunk Line Phase One, the $7 million project. Then we've got miscellaneous on a general maintenance, manhole rehabilitation of $123,000 a year. Manholes are on the order of 20,000 to 25,000 for a brand-new manhole these days. There are techniques that are utilized in the industry, I'm familiar with and have used them for new manholes where you can protect and extend their, their life, but that's significantly from the H2, the hydrogen sulfide degradation. But it significantly increases the cost of that manhole, might take it up to 40,000. But if you can extend the life of that manhole three times, probably money will spend, but it's a higher capital cost on the front end. So this project list that we're looking at here was the beginning of the projects for us utilizing in the sewer rate study. And Aaron's going to talk more about how to accomplish completing some of these projects over time with the various alternatives. But in the meantime, Keith is going to talk a little bit about what's happened to our system since 2018 to now. Thank you.
So I'll jump in here. My name's Keith Larson. I am with Bowen Collins and Associates. We're the engineering firm that prepared the sewer master plan. And we were instrumental in the rate updates in 2017 as well. And so one of the questions that I wanted to talk about a little bit was, you know, when we, when we came in 2017, we, we were faced with a big challenge, which was how to pay for the replacement of the, of the treatment plant. And in doing that, we took the master plan and we made some projections on, on what would need to happen. And the council adopted some pretty significant increases, 20% in, over several years to update those rates. And at the time, we had hoped that that would be sufficient to provide for needs into the future. And, and yet, as, as Ben has reported, we're finding that we still have a shortfall here that needs to be addressed. So the question becomes, is all right, what is different since 2017? What has happened and why do we still need to look at additional revenues for sewer? So there's a couple of changes that have happened since the 2017 rate study was completed. One is obviously the moratorium on overnight accommodations that has affected our impact fee revenues. The impacts of COVID have not been negligible. They, we have started to see some impacts on that relative to revenue. There's also been slower-than-expected growth countywide. And we'll look at what that does. And higher-than-expected inflation than was projected in 2017, especially on the construction costs. So at the end of the day, the consequences of these changes are that we have higher-than-expected costs and essentially lower-than-expected revenues, which is, you know, a double whammy for us in terms of what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. So let's talk about a couple of specific details relative to this. This is a comparison of our costs. And overall, what we wanted to show first was just a comparison of overall costs. And so what you see here is the blue represents what has been actually observed in term, or excuse me, the solid colors, blue, red and green represent what has actually been observed in terms of costs. And the dash line is what we were projecting costs to be in 2017. And so what you can see here is that you see the big treatment plant expenditures in 17, 18 and 19. And then you can see kind of projected what we thought we were going to see. So there's a couple of things to point out. Let's start with O and M. If you look at that, we actually are doing really well in terms of our projections of O and M. They're, they're nearly matching 2017. However, that is for a smaller number of customers because of this little bit slower-than-expected growth. That, which, which means that we do have a little bit of more inflation than is expected on that, on those O and M costs. We also ended up with a little more debt than was expected. There was an additional bond that was taken out in 2018 to meet some of the sewer needs. And so that's a little bit higher than expected on the red. The biggest thing, though, is the difference in the capital costs. And there's two things that are going on here. Number one is, as Chuck mentioned, the system has been discovered to be having more needs from a maintenance standpoint and rehabilitation standpoint than was expected in 2017. There's been additional data collected, additional investigation to try to define that better. And so about half of that increase is associated with those additional needs. The other half of that increase is associated with construction costs. And as you probably are aware, with COVID, with supply chain shortages, with labor shortages, construction costs have just been significantly higher and increasing over the last several years. Even before COVID, we were seeing some pretty significant increases such that instead of 3% or 4% construction cost inflation, we're seeing five or six or seven or more percent construction cost inflation. So that's the comparison of costs. I know, do we all want to pause for any questions or do you want me to just keep going here?
Counsel, does anyone have a question at this time?
Yeah, I do, Mayor.
I would normally make you keep going here, Keith, but it is sort of a pivotal chart. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Keith, thank you. First of all, the debt service, that's, that was, my understanding is when we took out that bond, that that was a fixed interest rate? And if I look at the height of your pink columns on my page, they appear to be more or less constant, built on top of the blue pedestal. And so when you say inflation has factored into debt service cost, I don't understand that. Because on the face of it, just in terms of what we have to pay on interest on the debt service, it looks like it's fixed by courtesy of the fixed interest rate on the, on the bond. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're correct. If I said it added to bonding costs, I misspoke. That would be my mistake. I apologize for that. Inflation would only affect the green, the construction costs. Your bond debt service costs are fixed, correct?
Okay, fine. And my second question is, you spoke of slower growth rate countywide. I've been attending Grandwater meetings and out there, data oftentimes talks about how they're looking at 3% growth. A lot of new, much more activity out in the county than what we've typically seen here in the city. So when you're speaking of countywide, and, and further, if you add the cost of picking up San Juan County and a number of new connections when they took leash fields out of service and so forth. I'm kind of surprised, slower, what, what did you guys plan for that, and what actually happened in terms of, of a percentage rate growth? I'm just surprised.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's talk about that for just a second. So in 2017, when San Juan was having conversations with the city about coming on, they projected that by the year 2020, they would have 250 connections connected to the city. Chuck, my understanding is that the current number of connections paying into the city is right around 50? Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So we're at only about a fifth of that. Now, some of that could come online here in the next couple of years and help us bump up. But we were planning for, for all those connections to be connected by now, and that's happened a little slower. The one other one that might be noteworthy mentioning is the USU campus was expected to be moving and progressing at this point. And I think with some delays in COVID, et cetera, that's still a couple of years out, is my understanding. So those types of things have just been a little slower than expected. Yeah.
It also worth it to mention that, that we stopped the growth of the overnight accommodations sector. And so between USU and overnight accommodations, we, we definitely estimated more than what we're actually bringing in, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to hear. I might, I mean, could I conceivably argue that in the long run, and say in the next decade, that's your original assumptions that you made about the 250 San Juan County connections that would come online as well as the USU thing? We're about to have a tour, by the way, of the building out there at USU coming up in the next few days. So I mean, it's coming. It's just taking longer than they expected. So could you argue that our current problem is not quite as severe as it looks averaged over, you know, taken out to the next decade?
Yeah, that's, that is a great point. Let's just say by 2026 or 2030, those come online and bump up. We're still going to be facing a few challenges, you know, the higher-than-expected inflation and the greater-than-expected needs in terms of rehabilitation. But some of these other issues may self-correct over time if we can get that growth back.
Okay, good. That's what I, I thought. Thank you. That clarifies that.
Perfect. Any other questions before I move?
This is Ronnie. I just have a quick question. I, I don't have the, you know, 2017 presentation in front of me, but I, I do remember years back, you know, being warned about how far we were behind in terms of the number of pipes we'd, or, you know, number of feet we'd ideally be replacing versus what we were actually accomplishing. So I'm just curious, when we talk about now discovering that we have greater system needs, what has shown up that's greater? Because we already, I mean, we already knew we were significantly behind and we already knew in the past years and presentations what bad shape, you know, our pipes were in. So I guess I'm curious what, what's shown up that we didn't know before.
Well, I guess I would say that it's the number of repairs that we've had to make that were unanticipated, Ronnie. We've had more, more failures than we thought we were going to have. That, that has gone up since 2017.
Is that, we get this for camera? Because I feel like we bought the sewer camera in like 2018. And I think we also thought, oh, maybe they're not so bad. And then we, we got the camera out and then it was like, it was like a colonoscopy.
That's true, too.
But can you, do you know when we bought that camera and if that camera data was used for projections back then? Or, because I think that the data changed.
Yeah, I can talk to that just a little bit. As I recall, in 2017, we had a small sample of camera data, whether it was yours or had been contracted out. We had a small sample of camera data. And based on that sample and the age of pipes and the corrosion observed in other similar communities, we had made some projections in that 2017. I think since then, you've been able to camera a much larger portion of your system. And I don't know exactly when the camera was purchased, but, but I do know that you have camered a lot more since then. And I would just say generally, it's trending to, you have more H2S corrosion than we would have expected back then, based on the, the small sample and typical numbers. We could talk a lot about the theory of why that is. But at any rate, that is, that is what has essentially changed. It's just having a better idea of how much is in the system and what the actual condition is.
So I guess I'm just curious, does that mean moving forward either conservatively or just smartly? I don't know how much of the system we, we haven't been able to look at or we just don't know about. But in that sense, since we've seen that change in the last few years, should one be cautiously planning that the other parts of the system that we can't see are probably, it's cautious to assume they're in worse condition than we think, too? So that we should kind of make that assumption moving forward so that we kind of don't get a surprise like this again?
That's, that's more of a policy decision on your side than an engineering. But I, I do think that plays into part of the reason we've been a little bit conservative on this go-around relative to growth, et cetera, is we want to make sure that we have enough and, like you say, don't continue to be surprised.
Okay, thanks.
There was maybe one other comment I noticed or a question?
Oh, Mr. Larson, I was just curious. So 2017 and 18, the, the green capital actual, is that when our system went online? Is that, that?
Yeah, those are, those are the construction costs associated with the treatment plant. And they actually jumped way up out of this figure, but I didn't, I wanted to focus on the area of interest, but yes, you're correct.
Okay. And then since that time, you mentioned that we, we've had more needs. Is that for the facility itself or is that?
No, not the facility. This is for the collection system.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The pipelines, the manholes.
Gotcha.
Okay, let's go ahead then and go to the next slide. That was costs. I wanted to also just show revenues to give everybody a perspective on that. So the rate revenue, or I've broken this in to, again, actual versus 2017. The blue at the bottom, the rate revenue, that represents how much your city customers are paying. And what you can see is that we've tracked pretty well with that again. And what you can see is that we've tracked pretty well with that again. But I think some of the the overnight growth accommodations, the moratorium there has resulted in slightly less revenue coming from the rates than than would have been expected otherwise. Non-rate revenue, including outside sales, this is all kinds of miscellaneous charges that you charge. But the biggest chunk of this is what you're charging to septic septic haulers to treat septic from the national parks and campgrounds, et cetera. And then also what you're charging to outside entities, which is San Juan and Guissa and those other entities. And then last is the green. And actually, we're going to zoom in on the red here in a second. Those those are a little bit less than expected, but we'll zoom in on that in just a second. And then impact fees are in the green. And you can kind of see the significant decrease in impact fees associated with the with the overnight accommodations moratorium and also COVID and other items affecting that there. Like I said, we're going to go ahead and zoom in on the non-rate and then maybe come back for questions on revenue. I just wanted to give everybody a chance to look at how that those sales are are shaping up. And this plays to Councilman Duncan's comment previously about, you know, is there a chance that we could catch up here? So you see that the Guissa and San Juan growth has tracked behind where we had thought it would be. And that's primarily, as I mentioned, that's the San Juan coming on a little slower. USU and even overnight accommodations outside of the city. So you can see that's where most of the slowdown in terms of revenues is. However, you do also have a few slowdowns associated with septic as well. COVID has decreased the amount of septic coming from several of the campgrounds and national park. Chuck, help me out. Those numbers were down around 20%.
No, they're down more like 70% overall in terms of septic revenues. And another thing that's happened is these, the parks have gone to alternative locations than our treatment plant. Some of them are now going to price to dump their septic. So it's both, it's combination both, Keith, of less volume for septic as well as diversion of that septic waste, which results in less revenue for us.
Yeah.
So that I'm sorry, you guys, but Chuck, what would be the reason for the diversion of septic? And then that is counter to everything that we're hearing about our national parks in terms of volume of of people?
Oh, the volume component was during COVID is when I said that the volumes of septic were down during COVID when the parks were closed.
Okay.
That's that's what I mean about that. And diversion, I don't know if they contract out to a private hauler or not, but you know, a private hauler will take it where they think they can do it the cheapest. So they may think that going to price is cheaper when by the time you figure in transportation. I don't know the answer to who who hauls the park service in the BLM or if they do it themselves. But I know if we're talking to Obie, and who couldn't be here today on vacation. But he and I talked about this. They've diverted closer to 75% of what we had previously.
So what I recall, Chuck, is that the prior employee that managed the sewer plant discouraged those contracts because there was such a prevalence of other not waste items in the in the trash, so like diapers and coffee cups. And there was so much other trash that it was quite expensive on the sewer plant side to actually deal with the other junk that was coming in and getting like pumped in from the trucks. And so there definitely it's a deeper conversation about why the big sewage haulers have decided to go to price. Part of it's cost, but part of it's whether or not we want to be so welcoming with that sewage.
It's it's definitely concentrated, even if you take away the the trash components you were discussing, which are real. The septic itself is much more concentrated and it has like a pulse effect on the plant. The plant can heat deal with it, but it's it's a higher maintenance value than our regular F1, our sewage that comes into the plant, excuse me.
From a revenue standpoint, that's not, that's not the best news. But from an environmental standpoint and what we actually want to treat, is that such a horrible thing?
I was I was about to say the same thing. It 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 has had a little bit of a negative impact on your revenue. But I, from my standpoint, I don't know that it's totally negative because of those other benefits.
But putting all the data together, it might be nice to have like a little deeper dive in that analysis. I want to be more competitive.
Sorry, Mayor. I apologize. Is it about $100,000 difference? Is I can't really tell with the chart.
Yeah, that's you're probably about right. That's pretty close. It's not. Well, so that that's total. We're talking probably about, I apologize, it's probably $150,000 difference from what was projected to what the revised numbers are. But the majority of that, more than 100,000, is associated with the Guissa and San Juan revenues, not the not the septic. Septages in the tens of thousands range. We could give you that number specifically.
I mean, that I mean, that seems negligible in in terms of, I mean, wanting to deal with the concentration of the sewage and then the foreign objects and everything else. It doesn't seem as big as is it?
Yeah.
So that's good. Okay, thank you.
Your rates going up may have discouraged some haulers from coming, but I I think it would be short sighted to say, well, we're going to lower those rates artificially just to keep getting that business. I, yeah, well spotted.
Well, and maybe, maybe we could ask Obie to do just a micro, just a, you know, brief analysis for a future meeting. Carly, would that be something we could do?
Yeah, definitely. We know this conversation is going to last over a couple. So that kind of additional information, if you have it now that we're talking about it, let us know. And that is something he could produce.
Okay.
So I think that's it for me. Unless there's any other questions, we're going to have Aaron jump into what does this mean going forward?
Keith, can we go back one slide?
You bet.
I just want to make sure that we're all reading this correctly. Well, I was looking for the comparison of well, revenues and expenses. So maybe that was it. Hold on. Where was it? Go to the.
Here's expenses. Here's revenues.
The actuals are the bars.
Yes.
And the estimates are the dotted lines. So.
Yeah, the the estimates from 2017 are the dotted lines. And the actuals through 2020 and well, actually through 2021 are they're the bars. And then based on that, we've projected revised the projection moving forward with the bars.
So so if we're just looking at a comparison of revenue versus expense.
You're you're about $450,000 short of what we expected you to be by the end of this planning window. In 2021, which was the revenue shortfall, I mean, that's 350 to $400,000 short of where we had expected we would be.
And is that shortfall of roughly half a million projected to continue?
Yes, unless situation changes, that maybe some of that growth comes back online. Maybe impact fees pick up a little bit. But for what we've seen in 2021, that that's what it would do. It would continue that way.
So short half a million unless we see growth, growth in the form of development of where we would pick up impact fees.
Both impact fees and additional rate revenue.
Rate revenue.
Yeah, Mayor, one quick, one more further question quick for Keith, if I may. Question may be forbidden as well. Impact fees, when are they? I mean, we we did the moratorium and I think in fiscal year 2019 and then made them permanent for the moment anyway in code. But there was a pipe, a number, you know, a handful of of hotels and overnight accommodations that were in the pipeline at that time and have since been completed, if I'm not mistaken. And when were those? So what would, when would the impact fees associated with that pipeline growth subsequent to the moratorium have been collected? Have they showed up in this chart? In other words, those little short green bars up on top, could we expect them to eventually reflect the impact fees from hotels that have already been built since the moratorium that were pipelined?
No. So my, I I'm not seeing Ben, but my understanding is that most of those impact fees hit the books in fiscal year 2020.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe that explains a gigantic green line in 2020 and then Zippo since then.
Yeah, yeah, I think everybody tried to get through the door there and it's dried up since then.
Yeah, we don't issue certificate of occupancy until all the fees are paid, Mike. So they could, and once they're open, all the fees will have been collected. And and all all of those, you know, that were in process when the moratorium was started are built now except one that's thinking about maybe switching around is my understanding, talking planning.
Okay. And one other easy question, then I promise I'll stop. Concrete, so if the if the hydrogen sulfide damage is worse than I might have expected, would that in retrospect in particular, or your decision about what kind of pipe to use in the years to come? Would that, is it bad enough to steer you away from concrete, for example? A little higher installation cost at the at the gain of a longer lived pipe?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we're not putting in concrete in anything. And and we'll have now, it's either PVC or HDPE. And Keith, you know, he works around the state. I think you would confirm that, wouldn't you?
Yeah, very, very few people use concrete in a sewer application. It's a great pipe for storm drain, not a good pipe for sewer.
Thank you.
And real quick, two quick questions. So I'm just going to use a hotel, the most recent hotel that's been online. I hope it's okay that I use the name, the My Place. What's the estimated impact fee for that hotel? What's the?
I'd have to look, Mayor. I mean, we have the the formula. They've already paid their fees. They're open.
The reason I ask is because if we're talking about being a half a million dollars short and this council is like, where are we going to find half a million? Would it be like the development of a hotel of that size every year for the next five years to make up that fee? Amount? Or is it a portion of that? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm going to guess based on the size there that it's on the order of 220,000. But you know, I'd really need to look to to give you the honest, accurate number. We calculated them based upon water meter size, number of units, things like that, you know, number of rooms.
But like a hotel could pay for half of the deficit?
Yeah, maybe, maybe a third of more realistic.
Well, and and remember, it's the impact fees can only be used for their contribution to the to the system. So it's not like this ongoing maintenance that we need to do can be paid with the impact fees. It's for a very specific use. Right now, the fund is is paying for that, what the impact fees usually would, but it still hasn't solved like that larger O and M problem.
Then they would pay fees once, once they pay their impact fees, then they're also on the hook for the fee part of it.
Their fees, which they pay now, they do pay those. They're user fees.
And and I'll just note that Carly is absolutely correct. There are limitations in how we use those. However, there is a little bit shuffling we can do because you are currently using city funds to pay for some growth related projects that you could then offset. It's just, it's a good point that we can't view those as the long term solution to maintenance issues.
Yeah, and I might add too, Mayor, that it's not free money. We get a third or half of our deficit out of each new hotel. It doesn't come free. If I'm not, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but there are services, legitimate services, the city would have to fund at their own expense out of those impact fees. Is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, if that's, we'll go on to Aaron and let him talk about a plan moving forward.
Okay, thanks. So I'm just going to try and run through this quickly, but not too quickly. We'll call it concisely. So the sewer capital projects, just to reiterate what was shown a little earlier. Right now, there's 13 projects identified by the city's engineers of at about 18.2 million in 2021 dollars. There's also annual expenses, three that we're accounting for. And that's a miscellaneous equipment expense, a manhole rehabilitation expense, and then a rehabilitation replacement cost. All of those are grown by 3% as we look forward into the future. And also, I should note that the capital projects are also grown at an inflation rate of 3% for construction costs is a increase, which nowadays might be considered conservative. But that's just to show these rate, these numbers are, you know, there's real expenses coming from from maintaining the city's capital infrastructure in terms of the sewer. So this is what the monthly base and volume rates are currently. You can see for a single family, it's currently sitting at $21.60. And then as you move to bigger, essentially bigger meters for restaurants and fast food and other non-residential buildings, there's an increase in those monthly base rates. Single family rates are monthly per thousand gallons based on the timeframe where there's measurement for single family, multifamily, overnight accommodations, restaurant slash fast food and other non-residential. So these are familiar to you, but I just wanted to show them to you. So you could see that on the next slide where that's getting us right now. So as we take into account the capital expenses in the schedule that would most benefit the city to maintain the sewer facilities within the city, you run out of cash awful quick with the current revenues. Capital expenses in 2022 are projected to be about 7 million. In 2023, about 2.1 million. We're going to review again kind of the 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 schedule of that. But as you can see, the debt service coverage ratio is low. It should be about 1.5 at the minimum, and it's already dropped below 1.12, meaning about $1.12 is what revenue you bring in for every dollar of expense. So days cash on hand also low, in fact, negative, meaning that there would be a need to bring funds in from somewhere else. Now, these are the financial projections estimating that the 2021 rates are held steady, which I think is not necessarily what the plan is. But we want to look at going from 2021 onward, what kind of rate increases would need to be made. So the objectives of that, if we go on to the next slide, are to obviously pay for those needed capital improvements to keep up with the inflationary cost, minimize impacts to ratepayers through utilizing things like bonding. We're trying to maintain 180 days cash on hand as a as the normal. We want to make sure there's sufficient debt coverage ratios. But we also want to make sure it's comparable, you know, with surrounding cities and that and that these fees are also easy to understand, implement and collect. So there's a lot of things that go into it. But we'll look at this first option. But we'll look at this first option. We're gonna have three options, essentially. The first option. Uh, puts the capital projects in the right order, meaning uh, what would be best for the city. As we look at other options, just know that we will probably look at deferring capital projects and we'll show you. Tables as we go through that, showing you what's changed. The option A, which is uh, you know, the option that. Best meets the needs of the city, starts in two thousand and twenty two with a rate increase of twenty five percent. To help maintain uh, the the capital facilities and also. Produce enough revenue to cover debt ratios. Uh, there's also, and then twenty three and twenty four, that decreases a little bit, but is still an increase of ten percent for those two years. In two thousand and twenty five, an increase of eight percent, so another reduction in the increase. And then in two thousand and twenty six, you see a five percent increase moving forward. Part of that. To help make sure that there's sufficient cash on hand, but also enough to cover the debt obligations because. Part of this option is to also continue to take out some bonds to pay for the necessary capital facilities. In two thousand and twenty two, you see six point five in a million dollars in bonds. And then due to some large projects that come around two thousand and twenty seven, there's twelve million dollars in bonds. So that's the first option. Let's look at what that does for the rates. This chart shows you the base rate and volume rate again, as they are now in two thousand and twenty one. And what a twenty five percent increase looks like in two thousand and twenty two. For all of the base rates, but also that carries over into the volume rates as well. So you would expect. The same increases for base and volume rates. Take that in. Sorry, sorry, Ben, go ahead. So this is what that shows us. This is how we get back into the green. So as you can see. In two thousand and twenty two, with the increase, now you have a debt coverage or debt service coverage ratio of one point seven two. The bond payments hit in two thousand and twenty three, so you can see your debt service on that second row. Goes up, but it helps you cover those capital expenses in a way that's more manageable. Uh, I mean, you'll see that the days cash on hand hangs out in the green as well. And then in two thousand and twenty seven, if you look further down on the capital expenses, you'll see where there's a twelve million dollar expense that comes in. The bond helps the city uh, absorb that cost while also maintaining a positive debt service ratio. So this rate option, option A, it's a little bit heavy on the uh. On the rate increases in the beginning, but it sets up the city the best for the ratios and the days cash on hand. Moving forward while also building the capital facilities that are needed in the, in the timeframe, the best services city. There any questions on that? I don't know if we really need to stop until you see any other options.
I think some of these uh, slides are very number heavy. We'll be sure to get these slides into the council's hands. So that you guys can take some time to digest it at a later time.
Right. Thanks, that would be great. Option B, C is kind of a, a more um. Conservative option in two thousand and twenty two, instead of twenty five percent is an option A, there's a fifteen percent increase. That increase uh, reduces to eight point five percent in twenty three and twenty four. And then reduces again to five percent from two thousand and twenty five to the future. Bonds are four point two five in two thousand and twenty two, and then eight million in two thousand and twenty seven. Uh, the reason that we can do that, if we move to the next slide where we can reduce them, is because we're put, now putting off capital projects. Um, so as you can see, I've highlighted them in red there, the South Trunk Line, which was slated for two thousand and twenty two. Sixty seven percent, we reduce funding to that just to get it started, but not necessarily. Um, all the way along, the rest of it is paid for in two thousand and twenty seven. And the South Trunk Line Phase Two, sorry, that first one was Phase One, but in Phase Two, we don't even consider it for now. So it's completely pushing off one of those big capital expenses. Um, we've talked. With Chuck about that, they were okay with it. It's probably not preferred, but uh, that is how we can kind of. Reduce the initial rate increases is to start looking at not doing some capital projects, which are necessary. Uh, but trying to pick and choose which ones we can. And just push off for a little bit. So. So let's move back through and see what this does to the rates. So as you can see, and we don't necessarily need to spend time on these, like Ben said, we'll get these to you, so you can kind of. Maybe print out these different options and look at what the rates look like next to each other. It's hard to see them this way, but we wanted you to see. Fifteen percent increases that single family base rate to about twenty four dollars, whereas in option A, it was about twenty seven. Um, but this rate increase is less front heavy, gets to five percent quicker, but that five percent. Yeah, and helps maintain the ratios. If we move on to the next. Option, or I mean, the next slide, it shows you that same table, shows you that this does work. Um. As you can see, in two thousand and twenty seven, capital uh, projects are not quite as heavy. Um, there's no twelve million dollar expense there because we've pushed a lot of it out. Um, further down the line, but this allows for a lower rate increase initially. Less capital projects that are probably necessary at some point, um, but allows for another option that's. Little more conservative on rate increases, but a little less. I don't know the right word, but but pushes some of those capital projects off. So let's move on to the last option. So this is the most conservative, as you can see in two thousand and twenty two, an increase of twelve point five, that's half of. Option A, and then two thousand and twenty three, just doing a five percent increase here on out. Bonds at two percent, or two million uh, at twenty two, two thousand and twenty two, and then five million in two thousand and twenty five. Uh, the reason we can do that, if we move on to the next one. Is because, again, in option C, you can see we're just pushing more and more capital projects back in order to. Um, have a lower, a lower rate increase. I don't think that this option is the favorite of the staff. We might be making an assumption there. I I think it uh, pushes off. I think this one is, is right on the edge of what's acceptable, from what I understood. Then I don't know if you have any input or Chuck, but.
I do, yeah, and I was considering uh, this option C is what is, the way to look at option C is basically what keeps us. Uh, from defaulting on our existing debt. Um, this is basically what the minimum that the city needs in order to just stay afloat. So this is the bare minimum. And it doesn't replace any, it it does replace some of those critical condition projects, but nothing beyond that.
Can't hear you, Mike, if you're.
Uh, a question for you, Ben, or for Chuck perhaps, this, uh, you guys have talked oftentimes about the South Trunk Line. Tell me again in twenty five words or less of what that is intended to do and and what we give up if we don't build it soon.
South Trunk Line takes um, the volume of sewage from the. Uh, south end of the valley, as well as will provide sewer service to that large area along King Creek Boulevard and five hundred West that. Is still on septic. It replaces a, uh, one of those, uh, see the sewer in Pat Creek behind Episcopal Church? If we did part of the trunk line, we wouldn't do that. We would replace it with a trunk line. But since the trunk line is so far out, we're gonna have to do this one first.
Oh, okay. So it's, oh yeah, so forgive me, Chuck, uh, so when you said south, I keep thinking you meant he- heading. Uh, south, or it would be towards San Juan County, so to speak, but that's not the case. You're going out King Creek Boulevard and going down that way?
Yes, it it would start essentially near the McDonald's. And continue down to the wastewater treatment plant. We've got three alternative alignments already in mind. It's just. And we were able to push it out further. If if we wouldn't have done the one hundred West project when we did it in twenty eighteen. We'd have to have South Trunk Line up here as our, one of our number one projects. So we bought ourselves some time. But not that much time. You know, we bought five to seven years by doing the one hundred West project, which had to be done anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to show, oh, go ahead. Maybe this is helpful too, though. I think we'll leave this one up. Go ahead, sorry.
To say is that we are at one fifteen right now, so we started at twelve fifteen. Um, did notice this as a one hour meeting, so um, and is a whole lot of information to absorb. Um, so I had uh, really, I wanted to just kind of point out where we are time wise, but then also. Um, uh, talk about like our next steps. So Aaron, if you wanna do this final.
Let's go real quick, yeah, let's uh, we'll just, let's show this one. Could I do this one, Mayor, and then one last one? And then, and then we'll skip to the next steps.
Sure.
It's, uh, it's a visual slide. These two last two will be visual, so not so much numbers, but. So this is just to show you the capital expenses by year by option, so you can see how the blue are bigger, you know. It it, that's a good thing in terms of maintaining the system. Um, the smaller ones mean there's less maintenance going on. Ben, if you'll skip to, I think it's like thirty two, let's just show the steps. Obviously, you guys know, I mean, you can look at the rates and how they, they affect the schedule, and then you can see how, how the twenty. Uh, the table that shows you all the financials on your own, but this shows you kind of the steps that you'll be taking with the different options. So obviously, option A is higher. And B and C, but kind of shows you that even though they might seem like they're, they're big differences, it's, they're fairly close. Altogether, it may not be as big a, a stretch as the percentages make it sound. So, all right, let's go ahead and go to.
This slide though, i- is the current and option B the same? I don't, I don't understand that. Or at, once we hit two thousand and twenty two, we don't have current anymore, is that what you're saying? So we have to choose three options based on this slide and based on the fact that we are, we have expenses that exceed our revenue?
This is assuming you'll have to make some sort of increase in two thousand and twenty two, because without one, it, it puts the city kind of in a. A red area.
And so that's kind of the meat of the sandwich, huh? Yeah, we're, we're here to. And share the side so we can see everybody's faces. Thanks.
Mayor, that's a really good point. Like, we're having the discussion one because like revenues aren't matching, and we're trying to avoid critical failure of the system. And we're, we're at that situation where if we don't raise rates, we will see critical failing.
Is there information available on um, other communities' rates?
Like a cost comparison versus like us versus Guessa and and other communities?
Well, I was thinking especially outs, Guessa is somewhat tied to us, but I was thinking other, other communities.
We can get that with uh, we could pull that together, Kalen. We didn't pull it together for this one because there's so much here. We didn't think we'd have time to show. We could certainly do that.
Well, and we might wanna um, control for a couple variables like. Um, community size, but then also we probably wanna control for who has a new treatment plant and who does not. Um, because that's part of the big picture, right?
Right.
Did the system, size of the system, those kinds of things?
Yeah.
Yeah, the good news is we have a new plan, that we don't have to worry about. Honestly. If we were, had the old plan in this, we'd really be looking a lot different.
So does it look like we're trying to a- answer the question between forty two dollars and fifty five? For a rate increase? Between options A, B, and C?
Yeah, yeah, that's basically the discussion that we will be having over the next few meetings.
Okay, and is that, and is that the difference on the average monthly residential? Um, because I couldn't quite see it on that last graph, but I think that's, it's about that. Is that correct, forty two, Aaron?
Uh, next year, it will be, you know, option C would be about thirty two dollars and eighty six cents. So that's base end usage, and then it, option A would be thirty six. And then by the time you're done, yes, uh, in two thousand and twenty eight, about fifty five. With um, option A and about forty four. By two thousand and twenty eight, that's about where you end up.
Yeah, so the spread between the high and the, the high and the low for this next year is four dollars between option A and option C.
But you're correct that it is based on average residential bill. Includes both the base rate and the average amount that a resident would use.
So the next steps, then, let's talk next steps. So um. And thank you all for um, putting together this presentation for us. This is uh, helpful and um. I'm Lee, as we, you know, just went through a property tax conversation about, you know. Where we are in terms of uh, available revenue, so we know that it's not coming from there. Um, uh, what uh, what do we have, what do we need to do in terms of like? Um, we do have new uh, new council members and a new mayor coming along. And um, and and we need to act and. Plan. So what's the proposed timeline for us to move forward?
So the next step would be um, additional discussion and possible direction given in the next council meeting, meeting on October twenty sixth. And after that point, um, depending on direction of the council, we would schedule a public hearing. And then following the public hearing would be a resolution to amend the masterpiece schedule. So it's. Assuming that we don't want to schedule a public hearing for the next council meeting, the soonest that action would be taken is either the. The meeting in November or the meeting in December.
So it seems reasonable to do the public hearing for the meeting in December and then have the new council vote on the action in January. And they'll certainly, whoever's elected first of November will be part of this process.
Yeah, so Mayor, you wouldn't consider trying to do the vote before the new council takes office? I mean, I feel sorry for these guys. They gotta explain the same can of worms to a whole new bunch.
I wouldn't expect they would have to explain it. I would expect that anyone running for office. Um, and hopeful to win is watching this video right now on YouTube. Um, or if they don't, that they will, this will be part of their homework when they're sworn in, and we can give them that homework. Um, so that they're caught up and they'll have the opportunity to speak and participate in the public hearing, just not at the dais. So I think that they'll have the information regardless of whether or not they're at their dais or not. To be able to make the informed decision in January, unless y'all just wanna push it forward. I've, I've just heard from a lot of people that there's um, not a willingness to make, take much action between now and January.
Uh, I, I don't know that we're not willing to take action. I, I mean, it seems like this is. Important and we need to get kind of a move on it. It seems that uh, I mean, these rate increases are gonna happen in two thousand and twenty two. Regardless, we have to do something. So.
I agree. I'm, I'm not really wanting to kick this down the road any further. I. It's not a great big surprise. I don't think anybody's really surprised or shocked by it. There's just new, there's some new data that we. Have to consider. So I'm not. I don't feel like we have to do anything out of the ordinary, just proceed with the, with further discussion and the public hearing and. And let it work the way it works.
Then that would be discussion at our October meeting, public hearing November, and then action December. Because we have one meeting November, one week, meeting December. Okay, well, we can tee that up. Um. And that's how we'll move forward. Summer, are you catching all of that so we can do the proper notification for it, for the public hearing?
Summer is gone to an appointment, but I've got notes for her, so we're good.
Oh, that's right. And um, and are, is there any issue with noticing a public hearing for two weeks? Shouldn't be, right?
No, there shouldn't be.
All right, then that's that. And thank you all for coming together for this presentation and discussion. And um, we will uh, I guess what will be um, set to do at our next meeting in two weeks is. Decide on A, B, and C, and then that'll be presented at the public hearing. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I saw a move.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Bye.
Bye.